Welcome to the Brunswick County Board of Education meeting tonight. At this time, if you would stand with me for the invocation, please. Father God, we come before you tonight to ask your blessings upon all that's done and accomplished here. We pray that you will bring forth your guidance and provide the wisdom that will make Brunswick County schools a better place for all those in attendance, and we ask it all in the precious name of your son. Amen.
Please follow me with the flag, please. Our flag is lifted high from the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will have board salutes.
Alrighty, good evening, everyone. It's a good day when the agenda has a list of salutes this long, so let's get right to it. First of all, we, the slogan here, one of the many slogans, positive slogans we have is that Brunswick County Schools is a community of learners, the community a vital role in our success, and we happen to have some community members joining us tonight that we want to recognize for a contribution that they're beginning this year, a program that they're beginning this year. There's a group of doctors, Dr. Sanjay Baddish, is that correct?
Yes.
Baddish, I want to mention, Dr. Sanjay Baddish, along with Dr. David Snow and Dr. Doug Messina teamed up to start a program with hopes of inspiring our youth to pursue careers in health and medical fields. The program and project they started is called the MLK Healthcare Career Scholarship, and future recipients of it will be graduates of North Brunswick High School. How did this all come about? After a conversation with his son about his friend's plans after graduation, Dr. Baddish learned of the financial hardships that many of our youth face that have a direct impact on their chances and their opportunities at higher learning. His office had already been raising money on MLK Day as a day of service and donating the money, the funds that they raised on that day to local nonprofits in the area. But after the doctor spoke with his son, they came up with a different idea. Dr. Baddish and his colleagues decided to divert their annual office MLK Day proceeds into a scholarship fund, and we would like to recognize these doctors for the kind act that will benefit Brunswick County students, you know, with a small token of appreciation for all they're doing. So if I could get the three doctors to come join us, Dr. Baddish.
Dr. Messina couldn't make it.
Dr. Messina couldn't make it. Well, we will have you guys standing in his place, so we've got Dr. David Snow. Dr. David Snow, I would love to take a picture with you guys and share this story. If I could get you guys, I'll tell you what, I'd like it right there. Alright, and you know I have to say, smile.
So it's been a real pleasure to be involved in this process. My son graduated from North Brunswick High School a couple of years ago, and this year was the first year that we were able to enact the scholarship, raised $5,000, and two students received it. One's going to Chapel Hill, one's going to be going to NC State, both pursuing medicine. And the hope is really, over the next few years, to expand the scholarship, to create a larger fund of donation, and also a bigger pool, and to expand it beyond physicians contributing, but to the greater community, other business members and community members of Leland. So thanks for the opportunity, and thanks for inviting us. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the honor. To tell you the truth, I didn't do a whole lot. Sanjay called me and said they had this idea, and he wanted to put it forward, and it sounded like a great idea to me, but it looks like, so all the credit goes to him, and I got his certificate. Thanks, Sanjay. But thank you for this welcome, and I guess I'm on board for another year.
And as we know, this year, of all years emphasizes the importance of the healthcare industry. So again, thank you to the doctors for such a kind, a kind act that will have big-time benefits. A lot of folks know, pictured here are 10 recipients, our District of the Year awards, our employee, Brunswick County School District Employees of the Year. What we did this year, because we had to get a little creative, was go out and simply surprise them. So they had no idea when we were coming, they were very good sports about it, some were caught on video, some were caught on camera, and we, each of them received what I like to call is desk jewelry. It's an apple of appreciation for their hard work. You can see those in the pictures. And what we wanted to do also is to publicly, because that was kind of private, we went to their schools, but we wanted to publicly celebrate and appreciate everything they've done, and give them what I call some wall jewelry as well. So one at a time, we'll call them up and snap a photo. Molly, would you like to help me hand out some certificates, some wall jewelry? Let's keep it going there. I don't think everybody could make it. Dave Mortito, he's with, he's our Operations Support Employee of the Year. He has worked at Central Services, and now he's over in deliveries and a rock star. Everybody loves this guy. Dave, if you're watching via live stream, we love you, buddy. Next up, we've got South Brunswick High School's Sharon Dixon. She is the BCS Administrative Support Employee of the Year. Cheryl, would you like to come join us real quick for a Kodak moment? Let me get a photo and get you guys in one. South Brunswick's biggest fan. Two, three, two, one. Alright, thank you. I think Chris Smith, I spoke with him earlier, he's our-
He's here. He's here.
He is. Look at that, I was gonna say that I think we lost him, he was right on a bus, but you made it. Right on, right on. Well, Chris Smith is our BCS Instructional Assistant of the Year. And a bus driver extraordinaire. Erin Rukowski, Brunswick County Schools Instructional Support Employee of the Year. Alright, three, two, one. Thank you. We've got Desi Green. Desi Green is the Brunswick County Schools Rookie of the Year. And a Lincoln Elementary School Leopard. Alright, three, two, one. Thank you, Desi. Competing for our District Teacher of the Year, we have three levels. We have an elementary district teacher of the year, we have a middle school teacher of the year, and then we have the high school teacher of the year, and they all submit videos, and it was a tough call. First up, we have Lisa Bannister, the Brunswick County Schools Elementary School Teacher of the Year, based out of South Port, Alabama. Our middle school district teacher of the year is Caitlin Diaz, Brunswick County Schools' Middle School Teacher of the Year, based out of Leland Middle School. Thank you, Caitlin. This year, we added something, a different award. It was, the assistant principals were classified in an Instructional Support Employee of the Year in that category, and over the past couple of years, kept hearing some chatter. You know what? That's really a separate category for all the things they do in aiding the principals at each school. So this year, we started the Assistant Principal of the Year Award, and the first recipient in the history of Brunswick County Schools is Ally Dixon of Belleville Elementary. Yeah, I don't believe she was going to be able to make it, but we were all there for the surprise. We caught on video, it was, it was a day, and she is, as everybody knows, is so well-deserving of an Assistant Principal of the Year Award. Okay, that leads us, yes. That leads us to our District High School Teacher of the Year, South Brunswick High Schools Jenny Bryan, who also reigns supreme as the overall District Teacher of the Year for Brunswick County Schools. Jenny Bryan. Get you to open it up for me real quick. There we go. Alright, guys. Three, two, one. Awesome. Thank you. And we'll hear from Jenny Bryan coming up in the teacher's voice as well. We are in good hands. The teacher advisory committee looks good. Okay, last but certainly not least, and no stranger to Brunswick County Schools, is our Principal of the Year, Bolivia Elementary's own Beverly Urey. Thank you so much, Ms. Urey. And that is going to be a wrap on our Employees of the Year. We can't say it enough how much we appreciate them. I know y'all do as well, and it just, it's the totality of everything. If you take each one alone, they're amazing, and then when you see them as a group together, it's just, we're really in good hands. So I'm very proud to be able to present those awards this evening.
I'd like to join Mr. Simmons in saying how very blessed Brunswick County is to have such fine educators and folks to work with and support our students. Thank you very much, all of you. At this time, we will have public address, beginning with Ms. Kristy Giedman. Excuse me, Giedman.
Chair, do you want me to advise the-
Please do.
Ms. Giedman, my name is Red Green, I'm the attorney for Brunswick County Schools, School Board as well. So the public address issue is governed by Policy 2310, and I have to read a portion of it to you, and it basically says, "Discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to be kept confidential may not be discussed in the open public forum. Chairperson would have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate or appropriate and rule the speaker out of order if necessary." Each of the presentations will be limited to three minutes, and I will keep time.
Please include this, this, and the minutes. Good evening, my name is Kristy Giedman, I'm the mother of three students in Brunswick County, a senior, a freshman, and an eighth grader. They attend South Brunswick High School and middle school respectively. Tonight, I would like to discuss challenges being realized by students and teachers being thrust into the unknown arena and the challenges from the at-home perspective. First, as I look over grades for my three students, there are incredible inconsistencies in teaching, grading, and even interactions. I have one student that receives a grade just for attending Zoom meetings while we are fully remote. I have one student that is struggling with remote learning, and the teachers are grading everything like it's a normal year. Grades should be granted from both sides, as both teachers and students are in an unknown area and struggling to find an equilibrium. I'm watching one child spend 12 hours a day in front of a computer and still not completing all his tasks. He's having to Google and watch YouTube videos to teach himself concepts that are not adequately being covered during remote learning. In a regular classroom setting, our teachers can skillfully work with attention, comprehension, and execution of skills being taught. This year, with remote learning, my student is turning in classwork for a grade that, no matter how well he does on it, there's opportunities for a second try or makeup, but only for partial credit. Partial credit with no additional teaching or interaction makes the achievement nearly impossible. Some teachers are taking off points for late work, even if it's only minutes late. There are times even us parents can't find videos or lessons that are supposed to be readily available on time. Secondly, requiring middle schoolers in AIG and freshman courses to achieve the normal standard is unfair when there is no help or understanding from some of the teacher staff. In a normal year, AIG students and eighth graders taking freshman courses are required to maintain an 85% grade average. While we must maintain these higher standards, there's nothing normal about this year, and the learning curve must go both ways. Teachers do not get normal class face-to-face time with the students and must not expect instant achievement with little to no instruction. In conclusion, points to remember. In an unknown territory of learning, both teachers and students have to figure out the best course of success. Teachers, students, and parents should be equally responsible in absorbing the blows of the current difficulties. When a teacher can state, and I quote, "It's not just your child, over 50% of my class is not meeting the grade point requirement." I think we should address the teacher's ability to adapt to remote learning and not just the student and parent difficulties. There are extreme discrepancies and no guidelines for our journey at the moment, and there needs to be a balance. We can all achieve together, but if the system is to condemn the student, then we all fail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ms.
Good evening. Please enter my comments into the minutes of this meeting. Good evening, members of the Brunswick County Board of Education and Superintendent Oates, Dr. Oates, I'm Lori Bolt. My husband and I are proud parents of a freshman and a senior at South Brunswick High School. We all know that moving to a schedule where students can choose to attend school in person 100% of the week is dependent upon the governor's order and at the discretion of this board. My request is that as soon as the governor allows 6th to 12th graders to return 100% in person, the Board of Education, you all, will approve it, and the schools will be ready to open to students who choose that option. Based on the September 30th issue of the St. Port, State Port pilot, 40% of the South Brunswick High Schools are currently choosing to learn 100% virtually. Today, my children currently have between two, only two, and 10 other fellow students in their class with them on alternating schedules. Clearly, there is capacity for 100% in-person instruction, assuming only 60% of their fellow classmates return five days a week. Remote learning for 11- to 18-year-olds, even in a hybrid situation, is not ideal for many students, nor their teachers. Few students survive, much less thrive, in this environment. Many students need direct instruction to understand these concepts and to ask questions in real time to master them. Students are not the only ones suffering. The pilot recently quoted a principal as saying, "I think it's a lot more work on the teachers," to be honest. When my daughter responded to a prompt for a college application that read, quote, "Has COVID negatively affected some students disproportionately?" She responded emphatically, "Yes." She continued to say, "Our public school students are getting further behind private, religious, and charter schools. These schools have been offering 100% in-person classes, resulting in higher performance and less stress for students, parents, and our beloved teachers. Socioeconomic factors continue to impact the quality of education for our students in Brunswick County. The most vulnerable students from economically disadvantaged homes have no choice but to remain in Brunswick County Schools and attend school with in-person instruction only two days a week. Other families with their financial means have left the public school system for private schools."
Ms. Bolt, you have 30 seconds remaining.
This will take a toll on our Brunswick County Schools. Ultimately, with less students, we will need less teachers, less staff, and less administrators in the future. Within the next few months, our seniors are going to be competing on state, national, and international levels for jobs and for college admission, and their decision, their ability is going to be based on our school district's ability to give them what they need. So please make sure that our middle and high school students who choose to attend 100% in-person learning can do so as soon as governor, the governor approves this plan. Thank you for the opportunity to share my perspective as a concerned and involved parent.
Thank you, Ms. Bolt. Mr. Jimmy Anderson.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. My name is Jimmy Anderson, I'm here today to discuss a shared vision, a shared vision that sees every student obtain success, first academically, and then second, in my case, athletically. I've had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Pascal, Principal of West Brunswick, as well as Coach Fletcher, West Brunswick Athletic Director, to share my sentiments on this issue, my thoughts, and my interpretations of what I consider a gray area policy. What that gray area policy that I'm referring to is, a student that attends a private education or is homeschooled should have the ability to play athletics within the Brunswick County public school education, whether that be basketball, if it's not offered at their public school, or football, which may be not offered at their public school. That policy is actually stated within the governing body of the NCHSA. That's referenced on pages 19 through 21. You can find that in the handbook, Section 1, Reference Student Requirements for Interscholastic Athletic Participation. Private education and homeschooling, especially due to COVID-19, as we just heard, it's growing. Our county is growing. Our businesses are growing, even despite a pandemic. My wife's in real estate, and she's seeing droves of family being driven in from inner city because they can work remotely, and coming to our place in Brunswick County, the beach, to raise their family. It's no longer a retirement community as we have known it in years past. Private education in Brunswick County is made up of nearly 1,000 families, who are local business owners, they're taxpayers, community leaders, and parishioners. I'm asking that we all work together within our county and our community in allowing our students to obtain the best education possible for them, all the while achieving success in playing a sport that they love. I've heard it stated that something like this has never been pursued before in Brunswick County. I find that a lie. I've also heard it stated by many within our community that's been here for years saying, "Good luck, this is Brunswick County. We don't do things like this. We never think outside the box."
Mr. Anderson, you have 30 seconds.
Yes, sir. In closing, please join me in proving the naysayers wrong. Help me to prove them that we, and you, the board, are agile, apt to change, and willing to take a risk that's never been taken before. The question I always ask before making a big decision is, why can't we do this? And I'm asking you the same question. Why can't we do this? Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to a proactive solution moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Just one comment, Mr. Anderson. Yes. Mr. Anderson, I just wanted to let you know that a few years ago, we have had this discussion in the past, when Colonel Tubbs was here as Athletic Director, and as well as Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent, and Mr. Shears will probably recall that we have had this discussion, and there's, a lot of it is legal, if you can imagine that, but with, we have had that discussion in the past, so it's not, you're right, it's not a new thought, and, but COVID obviously was not a situation at the time, so, you know, maybe there's, you know, something that, you know, can, can be done, but I've always been a huge advocate of that same idea, because I, as people will know, in the past, I have homeschooled my children, and had them in private school and public school, so I've done, I've done it all. And they were, they were sports, you know, in sports as well, so I do know of people that did this, when homeschooling began about 25 or 30 years ago, it was allowable, before we had so many rules. So it is, I think it's probably a very viable thing to look into. So thank you for your comments.
At this time, we will look at approval of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Excuse me, I flipped my page too quickly. Teacher's voice, if Ms. Bryan would come up, please, and please forgive me for that.
That's okay.
We definitely want to hear what you got to say, because we're excited about the kids being back in school.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Dr. Oates, cabinet members, and to all the stakeholders joining us here tonight and joining us virtually, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and in the months to come. My name is Jenny Bryan, and I am honored to represent the teachers of Brunswick County Schools as we work to educate and advocate for the students of Brunswick County. Although we all feel like first-year teachers this year, I am in my 11th year of teaching high school social studies. I am proud to say that this will make year seven of being a South High Cougar. I accepted my first teaching job at SBHS in 2009. At the same time I became a teacher, I became a pupil to my teaching heroes and mentors, all who have done tremendous work in this county as teachers and as advocates for teachers. When I left Brunswick County in 2013 to support my husband's transition to dentistry, I took with me lessons of teacher leadership and teacher advocacy to Pitt County. During my four years there, I replicated Brunswick County's Education Engagement Project at South Central High School, and invited local stakeholders and community leaders to spend the day with a teacher. As a side note, I am hopeful we will be able to host the Brunswick County Education Engagement Project in the spring, as it is a program I believe is crucially important to building bridges between our classrooms and our communities. It wasn't until the summer of 2018 that I really realized how true the saying is we have at South Brunswick. Once a Cougar, always a Cougar. Because it was that summer that my family returned to Brunswick County, and I returned to the home of the Cougars. I am back on the 500 hallway, working alongside some of the best colleagues in the business, including our new Athletic Director and last year's Brunswick County Schools Teacher of the Year, Justin Garza. Coach Garza and I have had multiple conversations about what it means to be Teacher of the Year and serve as the Chair of the Teacher Advisory Committee. From what Coach Garza has shared with me, last year's TAC pursued the student-centered goal of fostering and integrating student voice into the work of the committee. The COVID pandemic, of course, had other plans for the 2019-2020 school year, and so I am excited to announce that this year's TAC Committee plans to pick up the torch and carry off, carry on from where last year's TAC Committee left off. We are committed to remaining a student-centered committee with a special emphasis on the social, emotional health of our student bodies. We invite the board to partner with us in our future initiatives, and look forward to sharing the progress that we make in this area in the year to come. Maybe it's just the social studies teacher in me, but promoting and amplifying student voice has always been a value of mine. It's embedded in my philosophy and practice, both inside and outside of the classroom. Together with Erica Siple, I co-sponsor the Student Council at SBHS. And my SIP colleagues will tell you that before we move on from an agenda item, I turn to our student body president and ask for feedback and suggestions. While we might not always be able to execute a student's idea or immediately resolve a student concern, students feel valued when they- student concern, students feel valued when their concerns are heard and their input is respected. I'm at the high school, but I'm sure my elementary and middle school colleagues would agree with me on this. But this, of course, isn't surprising. I think it is human nature to want to be heard, to be known, to be valued, to be respected. This year, in my role as Brunswick County Schools Teacher of the Year, I will extend my philosophy of promoting student voice to promoting teacher voice as well. As teachers, we are not so unlike our students. Like our students, we have great ideas and valid concerns about our schools. Like our students, we understand that there are sometimes limitations and compromises to be made in finding workable solutions. And like our students, we thrive and perform our best when we feel known, heard, and valued. My second invitation to you tonight, the board, is that you seek out, listen to, and promote teacher voices along with me. On a final note, I would like to say thank you on behalf of all Brunswick County Schools' teachers and licensed instructional support staff for the investment in our local salary supplement. At the end of this month, our teachers will receive the first half of their installment of the $500 supplement increase. This $691,000 investment now makes Brunswick County Schools the leader in local supplement pay among neighboring North Carolina school districts, including New Hanover County. We appreciate this serious investment to commitment and commitment to recruiting, supporting, and retaining the best teachers in the area. As teachers, we are working harder than ever before, and I really didn't think that was possible. But, so this could not have come at a more crucial moment. Once again, thank you for your time, your attention, and your support.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. And I want to say again, as I said earlier, Brunswick County is very blessed to have such educators as you and, and all the others in our system. Now we can approve those minutes, those agendas. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Okay, Mr. Benton, second.
Second.
Ms. Cook, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Now we'll look at approving the minutes. We have the minutes from September 1st, September 15th, September 15th, Curriculum Policy and Operations Committee, and also September 22nd, Special Call Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Slow move.
Okay, Ms. Cook has motion to approve, and Mr. Lemon has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. Now we have consent items for approval. We have Head Start Memorandum of Understanding. Is anyone speaking to that, Ms. White, or?
We have consent from the committee.
Okay, okay.
No changes.
No changes. Local Child Welfare Agency Memorandum of Understanding. Budget amendments, policies for approval on second reading, policies to be rescinded, and, okay, that looks like the consent items. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent items as presented.
Okay, Ms. Cook has made the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lemon has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Now we have action items, which would be our local parent advisory councils. Are there any?
May I make a motion? We accept the recommendations of the principals from the schools for their local advisory councils.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lemon and Ms. Cook have motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I'm an aye, I'm an aye.
Okay, we got you, Mr. Benton. Thank you. Now we would have discussion and announcements from the superintendent and board. Dr. Oats, are you with us?
I am. Good evening, board members. I hope all of you are well and can hear me.
We can hear you.
Great. As you know, we just brought back our K-5 students yesterday. And I can't tell you how happy I was to see students in buildings, how happy I was to see teaching going on. I had the opportunity to visit several schools between yesterday and today, and just to see the teachers smiling through their masks with their eyes and seeing kids up doing what appears to be normal K-5 activity was, was something to see. And I encourage you to, to join me and going to visit some of the schools and see the kids in action and seeing the teachers do what they do best, and that's teach. So I can report that all things are well in K-5, and we hope that this, this will continue. Secondly, I would just want to, to bring attention to, of course, all of us know the loss that Mr. Miller and also Ms. Vicky Smith have had in their families with the loss of their fathers. Be in prayer for them, send condolences to their families. As you can tell on the agenda, the committee meetings, we have them scheduled for the 20th of October, and we'll come back with approximate times for that. And the next board meeting, of course, is November 10th. Lastly, by way of discussion, if you remember at our last committee meeting, there was brief conversation regarding our baseball fields in the district at the high schools. And I informed you that I would do some, some research, get some information on those, because we were talking about doing some type of improvements to them. However, in doing that, the operations department led by Ms. Rutledge, of course, was able to gather some information that I think we need to bring to the board's attention as it pertains to at least one of our baseball fields. So I'm going to ask Ms. Rutledge, if she would at this time, share that information with you.
Thank you, Dr. Oats. At South Brunswick, on the baseball field, we have a drainage issue. We, an engineer is set to, to survey the field and the area surrounding the field next week. As you know, from the work we did on our football fields last year, you know, year before last, drainage can be real expensive. And once we, once we get into the ground and we start to, if we have to put pipe in the ground, then that changes the stormwater calculations, and, and, and that even gets more expensive. So we're going to be looking at that field. We've got to do something. That, the right field line there has always been mushy, won't drain, keeps, keeps them from playing ball when the, when the, the other two high schools get the same amount of rain and fake a play on their field. So this has been in the queue for a while. But the reason I'm giving you that background is, you know, there's, once you go past a certain amount of money, then there's kind of, you know, maybe there's a tipping point where you, you want to do more. So Dr. Oats has asked me to look at the cost of turf on the infield, of the baseball and softball fields, which we started to put that together, the cost of turf on all of the fields. And we will be prepared to talk about that more in the operations committee.
If I remember correctly, Ms. Rutledge, the way we got into turf in the football stadiums were, I believe two of the fields were going to be redone and at a cost of like $200,000 each, if I remember correctly. And our decision was, why just continue to waste money like that and just do something permanently that's going to be, be a great thing for the kids, which is what we did.
Yeah, that's accurate.
And South Brunswick in particular has a lot of drainage problems. I know the tennis courts rotted, if you want to call it that, and had to be replaced. And I think some north maybe has some of the same problems. So I think it's appropriate now to look at that with baseball and softball, because what we did with football is, all the different teams, I don't, Coach Fletcher, how many different teams you got playing on that stadium?
Lacrosse, boys and girls, JV soccer, varsity soccer, for boys and girls, football, soccer, box.
Plus, the middle schools could come over and play a football game whenever. So I think it's money well spent when it comes to, you know, that type of fun. So I'm, I'm going to be anxious to hear what you have to say about that, because I don't want to waste money by just digging up the outfield or wherever your problem is and putting in some drainage pipes, and then you back at that again in five years and doing the same thing, so.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, right now, we're waiting on the information. We don't know how costly this is going to be, but we should know, we, we should know by October the 20th, which is when the operations committee meeting is.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, at this time, we will go, I'll entertain a motion for closed session.
Slow move.
Okay, second. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Thank you.